Call please.
Mr. Lamanna.
Here.
Mr. Schlechter.
Here.
Mr. Helfer.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Here.
Has everyone reviewed the minutes from June 3rd? You have any questions or corrections?
I did not approve.
Second. No motion of second.
Okay, Mr. Hayes.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Helfer.
I'm staying.
Mr. Schlechter.
Yes.
Mr. Lamanna.
I'm staying.
So we have some old business, but before we get to that, anybody that's going to speak today on behalf of any one of these matters, could you please stand and raise your right hand so I can swear it in? Don't be shy. Okay? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is of truth to the best of your knowledge? Alright, thank you. Let me reseat it. At this time, we can turn the meeting over to Vice Chairman Miller to work on our own business.
Great. Could I ask this question? Please, Jason, please, pardon us.
Yeah, I can't hear much more. I was not in panel.
Okay, that's right. That's why I had to be here, yeah.
Okay, are you guys... Do you guys want to go into executive details real quick, or?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Miller. I think we also need to publicly acknowledge that the variance request has changed from the original 10-foot variance on the 15-foot requirement, taking it down to five feet provided. They are now asking for a 15-foot variance to go from 15 feet required to zero feet provided. This is for the property at 5310 Elmore.
Okay.
And this is the new drawing. And this is what's an addition from the original drawing on the front of the road.
Is there... Can you have like...
Yes.
Maybe you have an update on this? Do you mind just fleshing us a little bit?
Yeah. He's got to update us.
Good evening. My name is Dwight Goode, line of Recreation by Design. The update is that there was a question, I think since last we met, with the configuration of property. Did everyone have one? Okay. So we updated the configuration and then... The nice thing about to us is that the right-of-way is such a large right-of-way at that particular parcel that to help us with circulation through the site, we asked to pick up the additional five feet. What we're down to.
Okay. Originally, the building was...
Yeah, the building originally was smaller since the last time we... Previously, to the submitted. They had a...
Can I pause you right there?
Go ahead.
So previous to the May meeting when we first took this up, or previous to this meeting? In between May and now?
No.
Okay.
Correct, to May. Prior to May, what happened? They contacted the National Veterinarian Designer and he enlarged the building by 10 feet. What we tried to do, that's what we asked for, an additional 10-foot. And when we found out when we actually did the layout, that sound like the site was awkward. So we were really requesting, found out even though they added 10 feet to our building, we really need 15 feet to do adequate justice to the site as far as circulation goes.
Okay, so two of the... First, the property to the west, is that that's...
He did address that issue with the property to the west again and they had discussions. He made an offer, she countered again, and they could not agree to a number. So they did have additional discussion.
Okay. But nothing resolved there? And I believe the drawing before, I thought the drawing was in the easement.
Yep.
The last time.
Correct.
Has that been resolved in this drawing? So I think we had, when we talked about, I think the easement was drawn wrong.
The right-of-way.
The right-of-way. The right-of-way.
There was, yeah, there was something... There was a question from this... Yeah, they had...
The sign would have been in the right-of-way. Would have been... The sign, I think you guys talked about is, if I remember correctly, would have been somewhere here.
Yeah, correct. They had the drawing that we were working from had that more squared out than that. So we updated the configuration to more closely match what's there.
Is this the same? Okay, any other questions for that?
So now we're asking for complete... Is there maybe no...
We're just running to the right-of-way. New landscaping in there really doesn't... We'll have to issue those added there, but if we're okay to build into the right-of-way or grow landings.
Okay, we're gonna take a quick... Recess for a second. Thank you. Over the side. Alright, we're back from a second with 5:20. Is that... Is it like that?
Well, it's your fire, your fire.
Someone make a motion?
Who's reading?
Uh, I don't know. I can do it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the variance request for parking on the east side from 15 minutes setback from the right-of-way line required to zero right now. Here on the new one should be zero.
Correct.
Zero feet provided for the property located at 5310 Elmore Drive, parcel number 78-54604, according to Sylvania Township Zoning Resolution, Section 2909.
I'll second. Any discussion? Call the vote?
Okay, Mr. Lamanna.
No.
Mr. Helfer?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
I'll ask for the chairman to return. Who's doing this? Ben Combs. Okay, the next item on agenda is a variance request for a front setback from 30 feet required to 18 feet provided for the property located at 3142 Elmont Road, parcel number 78-54604, Sylvania Township zoning, Section 703. And there is a companion request for a variance request for a side setback west from 10 feet required to 7 feet provided for the property located at 3142 Elmont Road, parcel number 78-54604. Daryl, we have a staff report, please.
The subject property is a legal, non-conforming lot of record located in the Lathrop Place subdivision. Single-family dwelling is a adjoining structure lot on three sides. A multi-tenant office building abuts the subject lot to the rear on the east. The existing single-family dwelling on the site was constructed in 1955 prior to zoning being enacted in Sylvania Township in December 1956. The original home measured approximately 910 square feet with 290 square foot carport attached to the house. In 1973, the property owner at the time received a variance from the Sylvania Township Board of Zoning Appeals to enclose the existing carport in order to convert it into a family room. The applicants intend to construct an 18-foot by 20-foot attached garage on the front of the dwelling. Two variances are requested to facilitate this addition. The first request is a 12-foot variance from 30-foot front setback requirement as prescribed by Section 703 of the Sylvania Township zoning resolution. Approval of this request would allow the garage to be sighted 18 feet from the public right-of-way of Elmont Road. Additionally, the applicants are requesting a three-foot variance from the 10-foot side setback requirement stipulated in Section 703 in order to construct the proposed garage seven feet from the northern property boundary. This would line the side of the garage with the sidewall of the existing dwelling. The narrow setbacks on either side of the dwelling prohibit the installment of an access drive to the rear yard where a detached garage could conceivably be constructed. There are two properties in the immediate vicinity at 3148 and 3218 Elmont Road with garages located within the front setback. The zoning department has found no records of these being constructed after zoning went into effect in Sylvania Township. Staff recommends denial of the requested variance from the required minimum front setback of 30 feet in an RA suburban residential district to 18 feet provided, a variance of 12 feet, and of the requested variance from the minimum side setback of 10 feet in an RA suburban residential district to 7 feet provided, a variance of 3 feet for the property located at 3142 Elmont Road for the following two reasons... I'm sorry, three reasons. One, staff finds no hardship, special circumstances, or exceptionalities to the property to warrant relief from the strict application of the requirements of the Sylvania Township zoning resolution. Two, the situation eliciting the variance request is self-created by a former owner of the property. The dwelling initially had a carport which could have been converted to a garage at some point in the past. And three, the applicants recently purchased the property and would have been aware of the limitations presented by the lack of a garage on the property as well as the narrow side setbacks that could not provide vehicular access to the rear of the parcel.
Thank you, Daryl. Other questions for Daryl? On the board?
Yes. So there were no variances for these other two properties? No records at all?
No records of a variance or a permit, which would lend the belief that they were constructed before zoning. It's possible they were constructed illegally since zoning was into effect. We have no way of knowing.
So what, just so I understand, what do they have available on each side of the structure? Between, you know, when you mentioned that there is no room for a driveway to, you know, if they wanted to construct this and back. It looks like it's... Oh, here, this side. Not much. 10, 12 feet on the one side. Because you're, I mean, you're saying there's no room for a driveway because of the side yard. Right, there's seven physically, there's enough. Right, there's seven feet on the north side and it's like 10 feet on the side. Yeah.
Daryl, you have questions?
Yeah. Wouldn't he be better off, I'm just throwing this out here, to ask for a variance?
That's what I said.
On the side. On the side. And then put a drive in there. Put a driveway in there to his backyard. On the south side? Yeah, 10 feet. On the south side. Looks like there's a fair amount of space between the drive, because they have town on the other side. So there's at least 20 feet between the house. Possibly, that's a pretty narrow drive. Yeah, that's what I was trying to... But I thought the same thing. It is, it's narrow. Parking space is nine feet wide. Right. I mean, actually, they wouldn't even need a variance for that if they wanted to put a drive in there because a drive could go right up to the property line. Right, so it's no structure. But again, 10 feet, that's pretty narrow. I guess that would be up to the applicant if they... Yeah, I'm just... Got a small car.
applicant here about to speak. Sign in and state your name for the record, please.
Who do I sign in?
Daryl.
David Novoski.
Were you part of the swearing-in?
Yes.
Correct, thank you. So, anything you'd like to say on behalf of fabrication?
The mention of putting a garage or a detached garage on the back of the property would completely limit our ability... Like, right now, it's an open space and it's comfortable for our family, but we would lose almost all usable space in our backyard. I know that the drawing that you guys have provided does show a very open area, but we have a very large tree. There's a shed in the back. There's a designated, although that's on our own part, but we have a playground set up for our child. Everything would have to be completely torn up. Our cost would be triple to do what we were currently requesting. But we were, when we did purchase the property, we were aware that the carport had been converted. You could easily tell by construction of the home. But we were unaware of anything seeing the property directly to our north having the exact same thing that we were attempting to do. But at the same time, it's also new for us. We had no idea what process we needed to go through, who we needed to speak to, information that would or wouldn't benefit us in any way, so...
Was there any brokers involved with this?
Yeah, there were. But they didn't know, they didn't...
Mention?
Yeah.
Now they're hoping to add?
Yeah, yeah. We definitely had that discussion multiple times where we were going to try and conform to the home directly to the north, among the many other things that we had planned on doing. But they never once... Their response was, oh, it should be great. Your home to the north is exactly the same, so...
Okay, anyone else like to speak on this matter?
So just a question. So, and Daryl talked about this in his presentation, but did you talk to the neighbor to the north? Are they aware of when that was constructed? We have no record of it, but is it something that might have been constructed in these 30 years, or?
No, because the property owner there, they've only been living there for a year and a half or something. A very short period of time.
I guess, even if it was after, if it was after, that's not so great viewing because there's no permit on record. Right. It's kind of a lose-lose.
So, I'm assuming the neighbor was notified about this as well?
Yes, everybody within 200 feet.
Have you had any discussion?
With some of the property, yeah.
With the neighboring property with variances, was there a question?
Not specifically with them, no. I spoke with the southern property owner, talking to them about it, because I guess they had owned some other properties in the area and they were pretty... They were positive with what their thoughts would be on the situation as far as improving property values in the neighborhood and conforming to... Although, I understand that attached garage in the front is not as conforming as just having a garage, but they were pretty adamant. And then, the other, the people to our north, they're never usually around. I've tried knocking on their door multiple times to have a discussion with them. They don't answer. But I did try to approach them.
Why did you... I'm curious. So it sounds like you at least looked into it. So to do the garage in the back, why would that add such a significant cost?
Concrete. Our excavation concrete costs would be extremely... I mean, we're going from... I don't know the exact square footage offhand, say 380 square feet. Like, the yardage of concrete is definitely a much, much higher amount because we're not adding a new driveway. We're just, we'd be widening one section. There's already a driveway in place. We only need the foundation to be laid and a side pad put in to convert to the full width of the garage.
Does the township allow stone drives? Allow what? Stone drives. Stone drives? No. I mean, not new, any since 97? Any driveways put in need to be concrete or asphalt? There are plenty of stone driveways. Still around in the township. Or even dirt. Unfortunately, most of the society. It's just tough.
Thank you. Appreciate it. If there's anyone else that'd like to speak on this matter? Someone want to propose a motion? Let's do them...
Do you want to talk? I'm seeing that... Yeah? You know, executive session? Yeah. 5:35. Quick executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion of combined use, too, a variance request for the front setback from 30 feet required to 18 foot provided for the property located at 3142 Elmont Road, parcel number 78-54604, Sylvania Township zoning resolution, Section 703. And for variance request for a side setback west from 10 feet required to 7 foot provided for the property located at 3142 Elmont Road, parcel number 78-54604, zoning resolution, Section 703.
Thank you. Second. Second.
Okay, Mr. Lamanna.
No.
Mr. Schlechter?
No.
Mr. Helfer?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Hayes?
No.
So generally, there isn't a hardship that would press us to make an exception here.
That's the issue. And then, this is one I've been saying for years. And you don't do this every day, so you don't know. Economic hardship is not, it doesn't, under the law, we can't... It doesn't give us a basis to grant something like this. That's why we're trying to find a, trying to find a solution for you, but...
Yeah. Correct. So your, what is the recommendation that do something to the property?
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah. You would need, you'd probably want to get a consultant to do that, you know, lay that out for you and do a drive and... Yeah. Say it to lay it out in the back. The point that we'll make there is that if you do that... Yeah. You'll probably have to take out the old driveway because they're not going to give you two curb cuts for us. That's another cost.
Okay. All right, thank you.
The other thing I would add, too, since you talked about this, is just, you know, you don't do this every day, as Tom said. It's really difficult to make decisions based off of like, hey, someone else's house, if it's available in the neighborhood because to Daryl's point, it could have been built 100 years ago. So it's always best to check with, I know you maybe talked to the broker, but check with your township or whatever the municipality is for the home because we see that a lot. Like, oh, someone else in the neighborhood did it, or it may not be permitted, or they may have done it 40 years ago when the rules were different, so... I know it's tough when you see it, but...
Play a lesson in it.
Yeah. Yeah, we see it a lot. You're not the only one, so...
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, a variance request for a rear setback from 60 feet required to 45.55 feet provided for the property located at 4243 Holt Road, parcel number 78-03354, Sylvania Township zoning regulation, Section 503. Staff report, Daryl?
The subject site consists of an approximate one-acre undeveloped lot recently split from a larger lot. Large lots, single-family dwellings, abuts the subject lot to the east and the south. Vacant agricultural land abuts the site to the north and the west. Just less than half the parcel is within the 100-year floodplain of Ten Mile Creek. The applicants intend to construct a single-family dwelling on the site and maintain that the floodplain, a lot with the irregular shape of the lot, impedes their ability to cite their desired house plan within the required setbacks. They are requesting a variance of 14.45 feet from the 60-foot rear setback stipulated in Section 503 of the Township Zoning Resolution in order to cite the dwelling 45.55 feet from the rear property line on the southeast side of the parcel. Staff recommends the denial of the requested variance from the required minimum rear setback of 60 feet in an A3 agriculture district to 45.55 feet provided, a variance of 14.45 feet for the property located at 4243 Holt Road for the following three reasons. One, staff finds no hardship, special circumstances, or exceptionalities to the property to warrant relief from the strict application of the requirements of the Sylvania Township zoning resolution. Two, the applicants would have been aware of the limitations presented by the floodplain and the irregular shape of the lot when they purchased the parcel. And three, the applicants are not without other options. A, the dwelling can be altered to achieve a footprint compliant with the required setbacks. B, while costly, a portion of the floodplain could be mitigated in order to accommodate the applicant's desired size and shape of a dwelling.
Thank you, Daryl. You have questions, Daryl?
The property line in the rear is the middle of the ditch, right? Right, of Ten Mile Creek, Ten Mile Creek. Do we get a response from the property owner to the south?
No, we do not. Okay, we have the applicant come forward. State your name, sign in.
Good evening. I'm Eric Grill, property over at 4243 Holt Road. And I took my oath. So, yeah, our request for this variance is so we can put a home that we designed there. We were well within the setbacks on the north, on the front setback. We're well within the setbacks to the east and the west by almost triple for the A1 zoning. And by looking at the average of the rear setback, we're well, well, well over the 60 feet and most of the property line. I don't think we ever thought this would be an issue. By requesting this, we're... We can't move the house any further to the west due to the floodplain being there. We have, we're not creating a hardship by requesting that refield variance in the back. That was, it kind of jumped out of nowhere. We own to the middle of Ten Mile Creek, which becomes highly regular the whole way. To the south and all the way is still Ten Mile Creek after you get past to the 60 feet. It's still river and bank. It's not buildable on the other side by anybody else. It's still floodplain. And beyond that, there's nothing there other than space between... And beyond that, there's nothing there other than space between the river and the existing pond, and it goes for some way. It's a long, long way till you get to the first building, if you look on the aerial, before you get to the main resident of the property to the south. By putting this house the way that we've designed it there, we're in line with the front setbacks to the existing properties that are being put on this road. We're not crowning base, so we're not, we don't gain anything by putting the house there other than staying out of the floodplain, which becomes, that becomes a hardship, because it gets deep fast down there, so... We've already been approved for septic by the county, and the way we've designed it, we've got good ground to the east, so we're really kind of landlocked right now where we are, the way the house sits, as it's designed. And again, we're not, there's nothing back there that we're trying to purposely encroach on to say, this is what we want to do, there's just, there's nothing that could be built by a neighbor down in that area, even though they own it, that's all Ten Mile Creek.
Yeah, I'm not, unless, one thing, Daryl, I know that there was a comment about potentially mitigating some of the floodplain, but I guess I'm looking at the, this, and I don't see how that would make any difference. He's not in no part of this, there's no, no way he can reconfigure it.
I have, I'm sorry, Tom, can I?
Well, no.
I have some drawing with a scale, I don't know if you're interested in showing that, that rear setback, this...
Yeah. I guess I'm saying, I'm not sure that, that part was an option here, in my sense, yeah. Being united in the floodplain, so I don't know that that...
Point is, if you fill the floodplain and move the house to the west, you lengthen the distance.
Oh, if you, yeah, but you, yeah, but that's not where, that's not where he's got the setback issue.
No.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Even if he, he's okay there, actually. He meets, he meets the sixty feet that's over here, and that's out of the floodplain. The only question I would ask, did you look at all, you know, not to redesign your house, did you look at all to the east or west, you know, because your side yard, the wall beyond that?
Mm-hmm.
That, you know, because you've got space, you know, as opposed to where you're coming south, did you look at that at all?
Well, we had such a, that area in there, we felt we had plenty of room to stay out of the floodplain, that was the whole key.
Right.
Knowing that it was so irregular on the, the whole entire bank, even when you get to the far west side, it's highly irregular. I guess we just didn't have anywhere else to go. We didn't know that was going to pop up.
You mean, these setbacks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we were, we were meeting them on almost every part of the design we looked at, and we scaled this out, it just, you know, moving ten feet to the west, you know, we're at fifty-five feet, depending where you take the measurement from on that east side of the house, that southeast side of the house. And the house to this, the original parcel owner, the house to the east, when they divided all that up and made the splits, their property on the aerial view to the east is, well, south of ours. It's, the front of their house is even where ours would be, but their property goes back even further onto that, if you drew lines the way that road's being developed, we're in line with the existing homes that are being established there, so we're not really creating a whole new odd area. It's just a very highly irregular spot. And then, the property to the south of us, again, there's just nothing there, other than river, and they're way, 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 way back. You can see it on that aerial right there.
You have an out configuration here.
Yeah, we have an out configuration, so we, that's where we're asking for the consideration.
So, on this floor plan, what, what is this portion right here that extends?
What portion of the home would that be?
Yeah, what? Here.
That would be the master bedroom.
Right here?
Yeah.
Master bedroom?
Mm-hmm. All right, thank you. Yeah, right there, to that southeast corner, that's the master bedroom.
Is that, I assume that's a porch in between?
In between, yes, sir, covered porch.
And that's probably a dinette?
That's just a, a little dinette sitting room.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Have you looked at changing the design of the house?
No, because this just came up. The reason is, is we really know this existed because we had such generous measurements. When we got, you know, approval of the septic, which is a big hurdle, you know, first of all, we have good soil there. That's another key part, this whole, where the house is, the soil is very good, we'd have to do very little to have to offset or displace any, you know, wetland or anything like that, we don't have any floodplain to deal with where we are, very minimal impact. So, to do it now, everything's bought and paid for, design, the application, that would redo it. We move to the west, we move into the floodplain, then we bring in all kinds of unknown fill, which would have to be done, we just have to redesign the whole place, which would be new estimates on building. Bank loan has been established or approved on the construction loan, a hundred percent signed off, it's done. So, there'd be a lot of, a lot of redos and a lot of time, so...
Were you aware of this drawing here? It shows where that creek is? I can't seem to find the creek.
The creek is, the middle is this, this Florida, that is, we own to the middle of the creek east to west.
The creek is real close to your house.
Right, but we're up out of the floodplain here, but this is huge bank, so if you were actually there, you'd be looking at it. Go back to the microphone for me, so he can hear you.
So, that creek is, due to its insulation, it's, but it's down in there. It's way down, the banks are very steep and graduated, and up on the other side, they go up even higher, so we're not really, you're asking if you're concerned about being too close to the house, because that southeast part's not in the floodplain, it's pretty solid ground, but we're well above it. The house is being built up, but we're, the creek's way down, so... I'd be more concerned with going to the west because it's established floodplain. If you were to be there in person, you could see it, the elevation start to go down.
Oh, is that? Okay. That's interesting.
Okay.
The reason we bought that particular lot that was available, because the ground was so high and firm on that portion of the property, so...
If, and I don't want, if I'm hearing you right, so, like, the popouts that encroach, you're saying it's not because of how high that plain is, having that further, um, the west of your design, you're saying it's not practical?
No, that puts us round to the floodplain, which means we'd have to, we'd rather redesign the house or purchase flood insurance, the bank approved us on not having...
It's got to be the garage. Right, yeah, so it'd be almost attached to the garage.
No, there weren't any environmental concerns with the, you know, any of the people involved in the financing or the insuring and stuff like that.
With your design, right.
Yeah. That satisfied their requirements.
So, anyone else that'd like to speak on behalf of this matter, or opposed?
Just to hear from all support.
Your guess.
I'm Todd Kime with Kime Design, we did the architectural design for the residence that's going to be located on this property, and, you know, how'd we get to today and where we're at, and here to ask for the request, and, you know, a very large parcel, you know, designed a house for it, you know, had the house placed on the lot, you know, never even really realizing with this irregular shape cut out of the lot, and I guess that's really what, you know, the hardship here is, is just, you know, okay, every other home along Holt Road is a pretty uniform shape, you know, they taper, we've done two or three of the other designs down here, and it's just, you have the really unique nature of this property with kind of, you know, that angle going across at roughly the forty-five degrees, you know, at what point is it really rear yard, or is it side yard, or some of these type of things that we've gotten into on other parcels and things like that. And I guess really the only point I want to stress is, you know, really, the, you know, encroachment is really just on the slightest little portion of the backyard there that almost, you know, if you were able to connect point A to point B and it wasn't the center line of the creek, you know, we're well over the sixty feet of what would be required, you know, for the majority of the backyard, and I guess that's really the, you know, point is, is that it does cut even kind of, you know, upwards across and then back down where we're really just kind of asking for, you know, really kind of a minimal variance for a very small portion, just to allow that corner of the house to kind of fit right there against that tight lot area. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, actually, I do, was there any reason, other than maybe cosmetic, that you didn't request a setback for the frontage instead of in the back, so we have sixty feet setback from the road?
I guess, you know, at that point, we're looking that, you know, all the homes along there are set at that sixty feet, and just kind of maintaining the, you know, aesthetic integrity of the road and realizing in the back, we really ain't asking for just that little, you know, corner of the property versus like something that would affect kind of the whole street frontage along there. Just a main reason. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to add that, it's been a quite a process, you know, designing this and going through and getting all the applications approved. There's been plenty of time to look at the existing property, the way that we did design it, to avoid getting into the floodplain. Counties reviewed it, everything's been done, so we felt that there was plenty of time to review this and maybe throw up a red flag, but we didn't, nobody involved saw it, so, especially based on the way we were laying out with existing properties, so, never would have...
So, did the county?
The county, no, they were, put in the application, we waited, and they approved it. You're talking about the septic? Yeah, yes, sir. That's all I've got.
Thanks, Eric.
Thanks, John, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Okay, as soon as I find it, I'll... Motion for variance request from a rear setback from sixty feet required to forty-five point five five provided for the property located at forty-two, forty-three Holt Road.
You have a second?
It's on me.
I still have no idea what I'm doing yet, so...
One second.
I'll second it.
You're talking.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. LaLaun?
No.
Mr. Schlechter?
Yes.
Mr. Hubbard?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Good luck.
Good luck. So, have a motion for adjournment?
Motion for adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All right, Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Schlechter?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
You know him?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yeah. Adjourn six oh three. Yeah.
Interesting, we didn't discuss that one.